I think we're all here. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order our work session. And this evening, we have representatives from RC Superior and Thrive Homes here to do a presentation, so welcome. Let's go around and do introductions. Mayor Clint Folsom.
David Harper, Planning Commissioner.
Evening, Kevin Ryan, Trustee.
Sandy Hererly, Trustee.
Neil Shaw, Trustee-Elect.
Steve Liddy, Planning Commission.
Lisa Ritchie, Planning Commission.
Ken Lish, Trustee-Elect.
Kevin Puccio, Thrive Home Builders.
Jay Garcia, Thrive Home Builders.
Bill Janks, RC Superior.
Matt Magley, Town Manager.
Laura Skudzinski, Trustee-Elect.
Mark Lasis, Trustee.
Bob McCool, Planning Commissioner.
All right. Billy, you wanna catch us up?
Sure, sure. Well, happy holidays, everybody. Glad to see you. First of all, congratulations to our new trustees. I look forward to working with you over the next many, many years to get this project moving and get it to successful completion. So I'm just gonna give you a quick background. Obviously, I'm here to answer any questions that relates to the PD or RC Superior, and I'll pass it off to Kevin and Jay from Thrive to take you through the concepts. We originally came here and did this same kind of meeting in July of 2017, which led to an FDP for blocks 14 and 26 for Thrive Homes. We went through design and planning process with town staff, got to an FDP hearing last June, July?
Yeah.
July, end of summer, beginning of summer last year. We ultimately ended up in a denial of the project, potentially due to a couple of issues, including a requested height variance that ended up not being a requested height variance. But anyway, Thrive has graciously come back and continued to work on new designs that take into consideration all the comments that they've heard so far. So the objective here tonight is to talk about block 14 and 15, which is really the sort of the heart of Planning Area 3, just surrounding the Village Green Park, which is just complete. I don't know if you've been out there, but it looks great. So they're the two square blocks that flank the Village Green Park. And the objective here is really to show you some ideas, talk about the previous application, and show some new ideas that might accomplish what you were looking for as far as height restrictions, and really just get your feedback on which direction you would like to go and which is ultimately approvable, so that you can come back with an FDP early next year that leads to an approvable and by the end of summer timeframe. So that's it for me. Obviously, I'm here to answer any questions again, and Kevin, I think I'll pass it off to you.
Sure. Thanks. Well, thank you for having us. We appreciate you being back. We definitely want to be here. We wanna continue to try and build a great community out here. I thought, by way of just introduction, for those of you, obviously, most of the faces around the table have seen me before, and we've seen you guys before, but for those of you that are new, congratulations. And I thought I'd give just a very brief introduction on who we are, and then I'll pass it off to Jay to go through the particulars. But we are Thrive Home Builders. We are a Colorado home builder. We've been a business in the Denver area for 26 years. The three legs of our brand, as we like to say, are efficient, healthy, and local. There's a lot that goes into what that means, but basically, it means that we're a green builder that really cares about the health and comfort of our residents. To the efficient piece, we just picked up three more awards from the Department of Energy for housing innovation. Those are grand awards for innovation in housing nationally. To the healthy piece, we just picked up two leadership awards from the EPA. They're Indoor Air Plus. And as well, as far as the local, we have five principals in the company. I am one of them. We are all Denver-based. We're all local. And the way we kinda look at it is, you know, you could buy from a big national public company and never get to know the owners, or you could buy from your neighbors, and that's sort of the idea behind that. And also, we have one more month to claim this, so I'll do it. We are Professional Builder Magazine's Builder of the Year nationally. I can stop saying that one in about 32 days. And I don't tell you all this to impress you, really just to impress upon you that what we do is important, that we build green homes, efficient homes, healthy homes, and that we do really stand behind what we do, and we count on third-party recognition of what we do. We don't just tell you that we care about our residents. Hopefully, we have third-party validation of that. So the last thing is that 100% of the homes that we build are Zero Energy Ready Standard from the Department of Energy, and as well, they are 100% LEED certified. So with that, thank you for having us back. I'll turn it over to Jay to go through the particulars. Just wanted to give a brief introduction to those of you who probably have no idea who we are. And I'll turn it over to Jay. Okay. Thanks, Kevin. Um, I guess I'm gonna refer to this, so... Yeah. I'm gonna crank my neck out a little bit. It's pretty evolution. So that's a great intro. I think a good understanding for the context, the project as a whole, and I have a little bit of background about who Thrive is, those of you who have not seen us before. As was indicated before, we came in for the northern portion of block 26 and all of block 14. And throughout the process, we solicited and gained some very good feedback on both those blocks. Essentially, what it comes down to is that we thought that we got to a very good point on block 26, so we proceeded full speed ahead with the design of that block and those 19 lots that are on that block. But that will be coming before the board, we're hoping, or targeting for a January board hearing for that application. But today, we're here to talk to you about these two blocks. And I give you that background and context just so that those of you that are new understand that when we were here in July of 2017, we were kind of gauging, there's language written into the code that says that there is flexibility on the height, and so we were seeing if we could have a slight increase in height. And through the process, we determined that there wasn't really necessarily an appetite for that, and so we went back to drawing board, redesigned our product type. Ultimately, that's a long way of saying that this time around, we're proposing a fully compliant project, and we're really just here to solicit your feedback on the site design, the aesthetics of the project, and architectural design itself, too, to go as far as colors, too. I think that we'd like to really make sure that we get clear direction and that we can all kind of agree on how to proceed with these two sites. We're looking at the two of them together because they sort of, you know, embrace and bracket around this really central, you know, community amenity, the central green park there. And that particular amenity I drove by last night is ready to open. I mean, I don't know if anybody's seen it recently. It's really coming to shape as is the rest of the community, which is very exciting. And we really took the opportunity, we looked at several different site plan alternatives. We didn't discuss those in more detail, but ultimately, this is the most, what we think, efficient and just solid overall site design that offers feedback from the board that we received both last spring and this summer. All doors are now facing outdoors of street, which was one major point that we took away from the last hearing. We have gone some lengths to integrate the open space into these areas to really kind of embrace that open space and amenity feel with the park that's been extremely well-done, in my opinion, and bring that into the block itself, so it really kinda helps to, again, integrate into the overall site design. And then we've also looked to provide sort of a symmetrical design with the overall site plan itself. So what we're looking at here is two-story attached townhome products on the site, and I'll get into the architectural design of that. We're a little bit more quote-unquote dialed-in on the architecture for this product type because, again, it sort of ties into and is directly related to the architecture that we're proposing for block 26. And that's something that we came back to the board back in July for our third townboard hearing, and it sounds like we were almost there on that site, and there was just some additional more detail to figure out on block 14, which is why we kinda went back to the townboard on that. So talk about more of the architecture there in a moment, but that is two stories tall, definitely less than 32 feet in height. Over here on block 15, we're looking to integrate the same three-story product type that we had on block 14 previously, although with an uncompromised floor plate, the building height on block 15 is actually a maximum of 55 feet, and we'll be well below that. We're probably gonna be approximately in the neighborhood of 40 feet, plus or minus, and that's still to be determined. So we have more of a conceptual architectural design for this block that I'd like to discuss with you this evening, and it's all based off of what we've taken from the design guidelines themselves. But that kinda gives you an overview of what we've really tried to accomplish with the two different blocks.
Real quick, let me get some feedback on the slide. I just wanna give everyone an overview of kind of the surrounding area to give you, especially new members, a picture of how this falls into the general master plan. So this is the forest stable here. This is block 13, which is already built with the four-story product that Wonderland built, so that's got 55-foot-tall palms right along this edge. This whole area, this block 25, 26, and 27, so this whole piece is further along in the process and is currently going through its final FDP processing with staff. This block is actually on a January 14th agenda, tentatively, for year review, so you'll see this as a final FDP, as the first thing that you'd consider as a formal discretionary action.
Which number is that?
That's 25.
Thank you.
And then everything south of this road, this whole big triangle area, is under contract with Toll Brothers for approximately 300 more units, and you'll see that as an FDP, probably sometime summer next year. So just keep in mind, this is existing four-story. This is proposed, they get 55-foot-high limits, so proposed three- to four-story. This is all proposed two-story. This is actually a single-family detached wall on the southern edge here, and then these two blocks are what we're, you know, getting your feedback on tonight.
Yeah, that's great context, and it definitely did feed into our design process because we did definitely wanna kind of transition into that additional height and the density of the core. So any questions on the site plan before I move on? I can come back to this, obviously. These are some of just the sort of character images that we looked at as it relates to, not just the architecture, but kind of what we're envisioning, excuse me, for some of these greens that kind of tie into the adjacent park. And so it just kinda shows you a good example of actual, you know, projects out there that haven't been completed, what this would actually look like when it's done. We've also got some architectures that are similar to what we're proposing for the two-story. And then this is an example of what we would probably look to be, at least proposing to adapt for the two-story, but we're missing adjustments on that. And again, so just kind of almost, you know, like a visual preference survey as much as what we're pushing here. It's hard to see on this slide. This is the parking diagram, and I didn't have some slides prepared, but I didn't wanna provide something that you guys hadn't seen before. But hopefully, you're able to take a look at this. It's a little bit low resolution, but this is basically, this top table is showing the parking that's required on the site, and this bottom table is the, what's being provided. Let me try. Okay, yeah, great. It does show. So you can see what we've highlighted here on the top is what is going to be required by zoning code. For block 14 on the left, with the two bedrooms, that we're providing 26 units, that requires a total of 39 spaces. Each one of those homes will have a two-car garage, and so we'll get to what we're actually providing there on the bottom, but the number of guest spaces is .1 per unit, so that comes to a total of three. We're rounding out from 2.6. So the total number of required parking spaces on block 14 is 42. What we're actually providing is, again, with the internal private garages, we're getting 52 spaces, so the 26 units times two. And then we have all of our visitor spaces accommodated for within the block itself. So the total number of spaces is 55 for block 14. Similar to block 15, we have 45 spaces required, with 28 units requiring 42 spaces, and again, rounding out, we get three visitor spaces. We're providing 53 internal garage spaces, and then we have the three visitor spaces all internal to the block itself again, so we're exceeding that number by about 11 to what's recorded here. So that's what this exhibit is representing. This is just kind of the topography. It gives you an example of how everything's kinda laying out. You see the gray kind of generally inconsistently falls down into the site. Then this exhibit represents the section views that we provided, just to kinda show both the massing of what we're proposing, but also the surrounding context for what the zoning allows for. So Section A at the top is kind of cutting through the site from the southwest and northeast, and it really kinda gives you that full cross-section of not just what we're showing on blocks 14 and 15, but also the context of the similar product type across the street, across Discovery Parkway to the south for block 26, which we'll be bringing forward in more detail in the future. You can see outlined here, it also shows the maximum heights for these blocks, and it kinda shows how we're tying into that. The other two sections are cutting through, kinda crosswise, from southeast to northwest through block 14 and block 15 respectively. So you see block 14 here, and then block 15 here. For those of you that aren't familiar, this is the view shed that is incorporated as part of the actual zoning code language, so we're just kinda representing that there mostly for reference in this case. These are some of the images that we're providing for the two-story townhomes that we'll tie into the block 26 application. Again, as I mentioned before, these are a little bit more dialed-in. We received great feedback from the board earlier this year that this is the direction they'd like to see us head, so we're going full speed ahead on this. But it does represent product types that we've built before that we would adapt for this particular, this particular location. You see that we've applied stone masonry application to the base of the home to kinda tie into the surrounding area. That's something that we heard loud and clear last time. And we have different product types. This is the same three-plex that's being represented here in just two different color tones. So any feedback? You gotta realize that the resolution isn't necessarily wonderful for this screen and projector here, but I'll zoom in a little bit so you can kinda get a little bit better character of what we're looking at. We're terming this as modern farmhouse architectural style, just because it pays homage to and draws from the inspiration of modern farmhouse style, and also kind of enforces this sort of, this main element here that is indicative of that particular architectural style, which is why it's kind of that predominant white color. I think they look great, but I'd love anybody's feedback on what they think as far as the architecture, but the material application and the color scheme as well. You're greatly welcome. Also, if anybody's interested, we're very happy to offer tours of similar homes in other communities. Just reach out to Stephen and we'd be happy to set that up. So this is what we're providing for our three-story architectural elevations, and I'd like to clarify that this initial slide is kind of what we're proposing, and specifically, this sort of contemporary style here. I'll zoom in to the upper left-hand corner to give you an idea of the sort of two-story or the two-dimensional hand sketch that we've come up with. It ties into the design guideline images that I've shown kind of off-screen now, that I'll host and back out and represent here in a moment. But it really, it's not what we were showing before. This is more kind of the thrive contemporary style that I think we feel comfortable with. We would work to design these roof planes to be adequately solar-friendly for photovoltaic panels mounted to them, and really kinda offer the overall massing, mix of materials that is sort of an adaptation of past products that we feel like have been extremely successful. So that's just our first sort of stab at the two-dimensional architecture. Zooming out, you can kinda see what this has been drawn from, so gives you an idea of, you know, where these sort of massings and forms and roof breaks are taken from, and gives you an understanding of kind of what we think could be for this architectural style that not only would tie in and be applicable to the guidelines, but also what we see out there in the community today.
Just do you mind if we ask questions as you go through?
Not at all. No, no, please.
So this is a, that's the four, this is a four-plex, right?
Yes, this would be a four-plex.
So I recognize this is just a sketch. Can you just with the mouse kind of distinguish?
Sure.
Where the residences are, 'cause I see two door tracks to each other, but I suspect those are two different residences.
Correct. Okay. No, that's a very good question. So the way that these massings have been, I'm glad you brought that up, Kevin. That's a very good question. The way that this architecture has been designed is to try and be a cohesive building, but also one that's articulated to kind of break up the massing, so that you know which unit is yours by living there, you know what front door is yours, but ultimately, it's more of a well-designed composition as a whole building. So this particular unit would have the front door right here, and then stairwell going up, and then it would be delineated, so it's almost a mirrored image right here. So this is the next-door unit, but it's, the property line would technically go right here, kinda bisect those front doors and windows on the second and third floor. So that, this would be one unit over here, extending to the exterior, be a corner unit. This unit would be an interior unit, so you can see that it would extend over to this delineating wall right here, so this second-floor deck would belong to this homeowner right here. We typically have the master bedrooms live to the front, so this would be the master bedroom, and this is actually just a window that's over the stairwell, kinda provide light and volume into that, that open stairwell that leads up to the third floor. And then similar configuration, although the massing, you know, we've worked to try and articulate it in a way that it, you know, reads as one cohesive building, this would be the next unit here. And so, again, you've got your second floor, private outdoor space, your first-floor patio, and then this would be the delineation between the units. So you're right, it is a four-plex, and they're all represented as similar-sized units in this configuration.
Is there a solid wall between the doors?
Yes.
Okay. I thought it was, but I just wanted to clarify.
This one here?
No, between the doors.
Oh, between the doors. No, there's no actual wall here.
So it's just a post? I mean, it looks like there's something there, but that's what I was trying to figure out, whether there was any privacy between the two doors.
Right. No, there's not.
There is no doubt.
There's not. It steps out.
Have you built any products before?
We've built some, we've built very similar. I mean, this is, this is a derivation of floor plans that we've been building for some time.
It's interesting, just the, it's interesting. Where was this product built? Or something similar, a previous generation product?
Something similar was built in Sableton, as well as in Ridge Gate, down at Moontree, Wee Bridge. Wee Bridge, along 38th Avenue. They're all slightly different, and obviously, contextually for the different community, but the floor plan and how it lives has been refined for quite some time. Can we speak further to the floor plans, or are we looking at the bottom floor being basically a garage level, middle floor is gonna be your kitchen, living room area, and then we're looking at two bedrooms up on the top? Right. That's right. Yes, exactly. And I see that we're looking at deck space on the middle level on the flip side of this image. Would there be deck space up on the top level as well, or is it just... Good question. There's a, on the rear is just an articulated rear facade, it's the garage entry. So this is what faces out, and this is what we want to face towards the street. Those are your questions. So for the sake of discussion, I mean, this is the direction that we're leaning, this is what we were proposing with this application. This is what the architecture that we felt would tie in well with the surrounding community. Again, drawing elements from these inspirational images that were drawn directly from the design guidelines themselves. But we also wanted to offer alternatives as well. We wanted to at least show that there are other architectural styles. This is what we would term as a transitional style, so we've got the contemporary, this would be the transitional architectural style that we've seen and that we'd be willing to entertain, you know, developing for this community. And then what I'll show next is more of a traditional style of architecture that's kind of Scandinavian in nature. But this is just, you know, kind of some, again, some two-dimensional sketches that give you an idea, it's really kind of taking from these predominant repetitive forms that are really seen with this particular style of architecture. And if we wanted to zoom in to the two-dimensional color elevation that we provided, this one, again, we've looked at, it's a very preliminary sketch in nature. It's not as flushed out, but we wanted to offer up something that people could react to and offer feedback to. But again, it kind of provides that repetitive, intentionally redundant form that, as you look at the building as a whole, it's cohesive, but it's also kind of a very impressive street scene that it can create. This was an experiment in just kind of applying different colors, just to kinda see how that would work. But for this instance, there are similar unit types. The delineation might be a little bit easier to see, so this, this would be the end unit here. This is kind of the delineation between the units, and there's the property line bisecting the units there. This would be a smaller interior unit, so not quite as wide as you can see. And then this would be a third unit over here that kind of has that end. It gives you an idea, same, same basic premise, it would be the garage on the first floor, some storage space, a little bit of living space, an option for a first-floor visitable bathroom down there, and then on the second floor would be the kitchen, living room, and then two bedrooms up.
Is this product intentionally a three-plex versus a four-plex, or could, or is it?
It could, it could be either. It's just showing...
So it's not intentional, just out of the sketch?
No, it's just, just for inception sake. I think that we have, yeah, so this is also a three-plex here. This is kind of, you know, a different rendition of it, in black and white here. You know, everybody kinda, this is a sort of polarizing style. We've showed this to people inside the office, and they kinda, they think that it almost looks like there are hoods over the individual units. But, you know, it just gives you an idea of how it could be broken up with, you know, sort of a shed roof covering that central unit there, but it's a similar configuration. This sort of shows like a deck that where available, where there's room, it could actually kind of wrap around the side a little bit and provides a visual articulation. kind of wrap around the side a little bit and provides a visual articulation. But again, this is what those images are drawn from. We want to make sure that we provide actual images, so that we weren't just looking at drawings, because we sort of inspired these architectural elements and kind of see what you're seeing. So that's the transitional style of architecture. And this is what we term as the traditional style architecture. And you can see, these are some of the images that it is based off of. It's kind of a Scandinavian style of architecture, and it's, it's less colorful, but intentionally so. It's more of a white star. It's a pretty powerful image when it's, when it's done appropriately and accurately. I think that we would look to sort of draw from some of what we see from both of these images here. Really kind of a neat way to really apply these pops of accent around some of the major features and, you know, potentially have some articulation that's integrated into the structure itself. This one is sort of our rendition of that, that would be drawing aspects of all those elements from the images that you've seen. These were included in the packet that was provided, so hopefully everybody's had a chance to kind of view them and take a look and possibly even form opinions. But yes, so we wanted to be able to offer three pretty different and distinct styles and see what the talent is kind of thinking about. Jess?
I have a few questions. I have to leave a little early, so thanks for this and thanks for all your thoughtful work into the design and the scale of the space. I think it's really good. I just had a question on your, kind of your thought process as you were laying out the blocks. When you look at kind of the pros and cons of using the kind of courtyard area that actually fronts the street versus putting those homes, you know, having kind of the entire block fronted with the homes, and then maybe an internal courtyard? Or tell me maybe more about your thought process on that? And then also, if I have to go before, before you're done, or if we take a tangent, I like the transitional one personally. I think it's cool, because I like the mimicking of the peaked roof forms on both blocks. I think that's, even though they're pretty different styles, I feel like the two really different roof forms might not, if you guys are trying to provide some symmetry, I like the peaked ones.
Makes sense, okay. So good question about the site plan. We looked at, I mean, this is an estimation, but we numbered them all, and I think we got into double digits for both blocks. And, you know, again, we're kind of trying to hear and see, we looked at completely sort of divorcing them from one another and having them be their own entities, but we ended up aligning with this. And we did look at kind of just having the perimeter line and then having some sort of internal area here. But ultimately, we, we saw it as an opportunity, it kind of just became isolated here. We've actually done that before in Stapleton. There have been some courtyards that are kind of back behind alleys. And I went out and walked some of those this weekend just to see how they felt, see if they were utilized. There were parking spaces in there, there were a couple of trees, but it really, that's not how these homes want to live, you know? And so I think that by doing it this way, we can actually really make this almost more of like a public entity, and you really embrace the, not just the architecture, the urban form, but the landscape and open space of that area. So this was an intentional move that we made. And once we did it, it was actually Bill's idea, and we were kind of like, aha, you know, that's it. That just makes the most sense out of all, you know, twenty-two different versions that we looked at.
And in the, the, as I called it, where you just have the units all facing out, you end up with this blank space in the middle that it could be parking, but it, you know, it's kind of a potentially magnet for crime. You don't have a lot of eyes on the street. It's all facing garage doors, you have garage doors facing the center of things. There can't really be a nice park.
Right.
And that was, you know, that was the whole idea between this, is taking the park that would have been in the middle here, the green space, and pushing it out towards the actual village green. So that kind of draws the village green toward that into this block. And then you have front doors, again, trying to, last one, that's front door still facing the public street, but with a nice gracious green space in front of them, and you don't have any dead space in the middle that coincides with that, which would be a problem.
So theoretically, you need like a setback waiver for those homes, but then you do need the intent of the street facing?
Yeah, we looked at the, the actual PD language to see if the exception's even necessary, because these homes really create, really create the street wall. I don't know if there's language about a certain percentage of the street wall needing that setback or not. Usually there is. So I would say, you know, probably sixty, sixty to seventy percent of this percentage needs to exist in, in the maximum setback guideline. And then, you know, to have the green space with these, I don't know if there are persons of exception knowledge, but we'll get the code.
And you don't have concern that that kind of internal, those ones, you're going to feel like they're kind of overexposed on all sides by concrete, or you feel like it's going to still feel like a?
I think they'll feel great, because they have this really gracious green space in front of them, with a lot of landscaping that, you know, kind of protects the view. You're not really looking at the back of these people's homes, you're looking out at this courtyard, and this is wide enough, I think, to feel really pretty nice and connected to the park. That is obviously a good.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Matt.
Good question. Is snow removal an issue if you have those kind of alleyways up?
Uh, no, we've tried to, a copy for, again, this is very preliminary in nature, but with that initial sort of site plan layout, we tried to have areas where there will be specific landscaping at the end of alleys that could be for snow storage. And we've identified specific species that are very hardy, that can essentially survive through that. So we have done that successfully in the past.
And I'm also interested to hear your opinion, including the new members. Do you have the old site plan, just for?
Uh, I, not even, it's online.
So the original site plan basically had the same configuration with a full row of home space in the park. These homes were basically the same, but then there were two rows of internal homes. They created a pedestrian pathway all the way through the block connecting the park out to Discovery Drive. The biggest issue that we saw with that, and Thrive saw with that, is that it requires three-story units, because these two-story units are too deep to make that fit right with the existing width of the block. So we could, and you're welcome to say, we like that three-story version with the pedestrian connections still. And if that's the answer, we're happy, I think Thrive would be happy to bring that back.
Oh, can you say that again?
So the, the original plan had three-story homes, had a pedestrian green space. If the board likes that better.
What was the, what, the depth of the three-story versus the two-story?
So I, I could speak to that a little bit more. It's kind of based on the floor plan. If you look here, this is what we were talking about before. You can see the garage space outlined here. So there's garage on the bottom floor and a small amount of living. And then on, above that is the kitchen and living and the two bedrooms above that. For the two-story.
Do you know that depth?
That depth is about forty, forty-one, forty-two feet. Then for this product type, you can see pretty clearly here that you actually kind of pull that garage out. And so it's now part of the first floor.
So your main living's down.
So you're breaking the second floor down, and it just makes it that much deeper.
How deep are these?
Those are about sixty-four, sixty-five feet.
So these are twenty-two feet deeper than the previous three-story units?
And what's the, on the old plan, what was the total for block fourteen? The total count of twelve units versus the count today?
Good question. So it was a little bit different configuration. They were even deeper lots here. They were eighty-foot deep, and there was the actual, we brought the whole bedroom down, so it was an even deeper floor plan. There were eight of those, and then there were twenty-four of the three-story that we're now integrating up here. So it was a total of thirty-two. This current site plan is showing, this is twenty-six on this floor.
So the extra three homes in the middle got moved up to the other block? Is that what you're saying?
Um, no, it was a very different site. A very different site. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
This, you can pass this around, this is the old configuration.
I've got it up right now. I'm just, so did these extra three homes go away, or did they get moved to the other block, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's just a.
They're in line.
Yeah, totally.
That's nice.
Can, uh, so it's noted that there's three of you dwelling units in block fifteen that have one-point-five garages? Is that the three in the middle?
Yeah, so it's actually, if you look a little bit closer, it's this unit here, it's the lighter colored units that we've integrated in here. So they're, they're oversized, one-car garage, we marketed it as a one-point-five car garage, because it's not quite big enough for two cars, but it's.
Can you speak to why the one-point-five rather than keeping it uniform for two all around?
Uh, it's just, it's a space. It's just a geography.
It's a smaller unit. It's, it's to provide just a choice of housing for more affordable, more affordable, or I should say attainable product. It's a sixteen-foot-six wide unit, so you can't really get two-car garage in there.
With your experience building this type of product, I see that the three visitor spaces are kind of the proximity of that area. Is there concern that those three visitor spaces basically become a second space for that garage then, since they're the only ones, just from a practical use standpoint?
It's, it's tough to say. You know, I told it, I was walking through some old Stapleton neighborhoods this, this weekend, and they had kind of that, that central area that was really kind of underutilized and a bit neglected. And they had four spaces each, and they had the previous version of this product type integrated in, similar to how we've shown it here about once every five or six buildings. And it, they, they were not parked in. And I walked through several similarly configured blocks.
Also, the metro district that controls all the semi-public areas, including all the alleys, or lanes as they're called, and guest parking spaces, has control rights. So it, you can't park there as a resident, and if it becomes a problem, they'll put signage up, not more than two-hour parking or whatever, and we can manage that. So it's certainly not intended to be a permanent resident parking spot.
As a follow-up question, you mentioned Stapleton has the internal parking spaces. I think I've usually seen them as more external in nature to the development. Is that intentional to make sure that people other than visitors aren't using it, or that just happens the way this was designed?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there is street parking all around the block, obviously.
We just want to make sure that we didn't need to rely on that for a considering, a completed for a internal.
And for the two-car garages, those are still the one behind the other, not side by side?
They are side by side.
They are side by side.
Yep.
Great.
Well, I was one of your naysayers before, and I really like this. I really like this. I'm, I'm the only person on the board that lives in a townhouse community, and I appreciate that you listened. I truly appreciate it. I really like that green space you've put down through the middle of the community. Living in a townhouse community, just having some sort of a green space is really critical. And I really like what you've done there. I like the, I really like the fact that you've gone two-story units. That's going to make those units, those nine-foot ceiling, eight-foot ceilings on the first floor were ridiculous. I mean, nobody would have liked that. So I, I, I very much appreciate what you've done here. You face those houses toward the street, like I asked, and you got rid of that long thing down through the middle, which would really, it doesn't work in our community, and I don't think it was going to work in yours either. It just gets too shaded, so, you know, maybe I'll be the one, be the only one who'll like it this time. But, you know, I, I really, really like what you've done here.
To keep you rolling, do you have any preference on the architecture between that traditional or?
You know, the only thing that really bothers me on that is those front doors right next to each other. As somebody who lives in a townhouse unit, knowing I'm going in exactly smack dab next to somebody else, that just seems really not cool. So, you know, maybe most people that wouldn't bother, but I've never lived in a situation, I've lived in townhouses pretty much my whole life, except for once. But that, I don't like that, those, those doors right next to each other.
Can I explain why they are that way?
I mean, I, I understand what you're doing, because you're mirroring the units, but...
Well, we're mirroring the units, because what you do is when you have the stairwell here, you know, inherently in a townhome, you're, you're dealing with sharing two walls typically. So when you have the opportunity for a corner unit, you don't want this to be your stairwell. You want this to be as open as possible to your living areas, which is why it's flipped, which is why these end up together. What I think we could probably entertain is if the real objection is that you're right next to that door with no sort of barrier, I mean, we could, we could figure out a way to, to address that issue.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I know in our building, none of the stairwells are on the same wall. They're all, and I'm in a building with five units, and none of us have the stairwell on the same, you know, and our doors also don't nail. That is strictly my personal preference. But I wouldn't like, you know, coming in, taking my groceries in, and somebody else is coming in doing their groceries at the same, you know, on the exact same. So maybe they're coming in through the garage with their groceries. But, but that to me would just be less attractive. And then there was one of the façades where you actually had variations in the way the windows were on the front side. I don't remember which one it was. But they, like, the, the bottom one, I didn't like, there was just too much symmetry for me, but.
Which bottom one? The left one?
But I live in symmetry right now, so, you know.
You're referring to this style here?
Yeah, and I actually really like that look, but I don't like that the windows all look the exact same. So, but for me, the bigger thing was the two stories and everything facing to the front. I'm not an architectural expert, so, you know, as far as the exterior design, as long as we're meeting the guidelines, that's more important for me.
Thank you.
And I, and I really like that you worked those green spaces to the park, because it really does make it, even though that park doesn't belong to those two communities, it's going to feel like it belongs to those communities. So it's going to feel bigger for them.
To Sandy's point, in the second option, can you clarify where the door, the two middle doors are on that three-plex?
Sure. So, you see them here? And then the third is here.
So in between the first and the second, is there a post between those? Or is that, okay.
There's absolutely opportunity for a full wall, though, if you wanted to.
Okay. I mean, I would hesitate with a full wall blocking it off and kind of how that feels when you're exiting.
Yeah, even if it was like a half-wall, maybe.
Okay.
That might, that, that might help.
Well, and it sounds like this one has a post at least, so.
It does.
So that helps delineate, whereas the first option was the one that was completely.
Yeah.
I personally like the full wall. I've been to a lot of these homes in Denver that are similar to this, and the ones with the full walls allow for more customization. You get to do more design work yourself, put up your own, your own character, and it feels more like your own rather than a shared unit, but.
So I would just question on that first one, even though, even though they are close together, it looks like there's kind of separate stairs going up to each one, so you still would have your own stoop. It's not a shared stoop. I don't know if that makes it appeal more, but. See how there is that gap between the stairs? So that to me made it more comfortable.
They all have their own private outdoor space at the patio level and as well.
There is a patio, yeah.
And what is, what's between those two sets of stairs? Is there just a gap where somebody could fall in? Is there railing?
Typically, a rail is not needed. That, right now, this is just shown conceptually. If, if, by code, we needed a rail, we'd put a rail in, but typically, it's just a couple of steps. I think, I think our Stapleton models do have rail between the two, but that's, that's dictated by code. And then it's typically a downspout and drainage rail between the two coming out to the, to the units. But we also.
It just seems like an area for a lot of leaves and trash to gather, especially with our windy conditions.
Let's give you back. Another thing that we can do is kind of offset, maybe if it's a plan you want to stand out further. See if that's successful. Yeah, any of these buildings are designed to step that way, as long as the site plan allows it as well. So that will, that would help, for consideration's sake.
And all these units have, are solar, solar's going to work on all these.
We'll, we'll design them.
So all the, all the roof line will be facing south, or just to some degree that you can be?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily. What we'll, what we typically do is we'll try to face many of the monopitch roofs to optimal solar, which is some way to the aspect of south. But we're not going to sacrifice the architecture of the overall building to make sure that every single one, but we, what we try to do is design a form to follow function. So where we can, yes. We can say that with this site plan and with this architecture, that we'll provide that every unit can have solar, it's just a matter of how much. And we'll try to obviously maximize that. And we'll try to obviously maximize that.
What is, since you brought up a roof pitch, what is the expected roof pitch?
I don't know. Uh, we don't necessarily have that identified yet. I mean, have a measure. These are just really conceptual drawings.
It's more than two and twelve.
Yes.
We learned that. There's not a flat roof, I'll tell you that.
No.
Yeah, that was not good.
So is your biggest ask here what the, the style preferences for fifteen, is that kind of the biggest?
For fifteen.
Yeah.
No, sorry, for fifteen year. It's, it's, it's a couple of things first off and we want to understand and thank you for that feedback, that we're moving in the right direction, that we're listening. So that we're moving in the right direction when it comes to massing and density first off and then uh while we. Yeah, and while we've got you, what do you think of the architecture? We kind of had throughout three styles. Um and all of these are conceptual and they can be modified.
I will, this is the ring that I really like to, to do layout. It's. I mean, my, my first reaction when I saw the little green spaces tied into the park was very well done. It, it just really fits nicely. I kind of prefer the um, the transitional. I think it complements. Complements fourteen, a little bit better. I, I like them all, but I think in terms of, there, there is a lot of continuity between the park and I, I think it would just complement a little bit better. The transitional.
So we got two votes for transitional.
Do you make that three?
Well, for voting, I go contemporary, so. And I mean, and part of it is, you know, I lived in a three-story townhouse for a while and swapping the groceries up the second floor was the biggest pain in the butt. And that's something you guys have to overcome with the marketing. I'm not going to worry about that, but I do like, you know, that, that floor plan, the contemporary tend to work a little bit better. I think just with how downtown's period is kind of forming right now, I tend to think it fits a little better, but that's just my bias.
So I, I think, you know, first off, thanks for coming back. I, I really appreciate the work that you guys have spent um improving the site design. I think when we're looking at this project, we need to be mindful of what's planned on twenty-six. And then what else is already approved and, and built on thirteen. I think to Clint's point. I really like the courtyards on either side and the symmetry fourteen and fifteen. And I think that the, the courtyard's kind of funneling into the park is, is brilliant. It's just going to make the park feel bigger. It's going to be more inviting. I, I think it's just, it's a, it's a great idea. Um but I think to fully take advantage of that, you don't want the contrast between. The architecture on fifteen and fourteen to be so stark that it seems like two different communities. Like you want them to really be tied in. And I think you've tied the architecture on fourteen well with what's already on twenty-six. So there needs to be some sort of, I think, natural transition um into fifteen, which then can flow into, you know, block thirteen and, and it's up there. And I think if we went, although I like the contemporary, it's, it's almost a little too jarring uh in, in terms of the difference in the architectural styles. However, you know, I'm not a huge fan of the kind of triangular stacked like shoebox style height house on. Uh at least on the elevation in the top left. I really like the, just the, the materials and the different pitches on that second picture right next to it. So you've got kind of like a distressed wood and then a two-tone wood. I think that's a really attractive. Yeah, that, that one, that, that picture. And then also the, the, the fourplex on the far right. Having that wood there. I mean, obviously they're, they're different styles, but I think something like that really adds a little variety. Whereas the lower right. Those, that, the three, three bucks right there, I guess it's fourplex, but um it, that, that, that just seems a little boring to me. On the traditional elevations, I'm not a huge fan of the. Straight out of Oslo houses um on the bottom right, but I love the architecture on the top right. I think that that is gorgeous. And I think if you guys were, you know, looking to kind of get inspired here, I love how those windows pop out of the house on the, on the second level there. I love the stonework, how it doesn't wrap the entire house, but it's just kind of subtly placed and then kind of follows with the wall there. The, the stark contrast between the, the cream of the house and then the dark roof, I think that pitch would be perfect for solar. I think the solar tiles would also kind of blend into a roof of that shade. Uh so I really like that architecture. Uh and then I like those two on the transitional elevation. So that's probably not much help to you there because the hodgepodge.
It is.
I, I guess my, my recommendation is as you're going through this, just be mindful of, of a transition that this works with the stuff that's on fourteen. And then the existing uh approved and built uh homes on thirteen.
That's a good point.
Yeah, cool. And like that same design that Mark was talking about, I like the, the, on the uh traditional, on that bottom corner, on the bottom left corner. Because the, the fronts of the buildings looked, for me, they looked very different. And that's what, part of why, when I was talking about the one that looked the most different, that's why I like that building. Because the, the fronts of those buildings do not, of those units do not all look the same. And that's probably way more expensive and complicated to do, but I, it would feel like it's a different home. As opposed to some of the other, like the one on the right side, you look just like everybody else.
Right, and then you picked up on it obviously, but you can see that what we've done here is really a combination of both of those. It's, it's, it's understanding exactly the point you make and understanding how to incorporate some of those other elements with the window pop out, the different materials.
So with regard to this one, it's hard to tell because I realize this is a preliminary sketch. And what I like best about the top right one is the fact that the roof actually comes out over the walls of the home. And that's what I don't like about the top left and bottom right pictures is the fact that the roof just ends at the wall. So if this design were done so that the roof does come over the edges, I, I agree that I like that one the best. Otherwise, I would be inclined to go with the transitional. And I don't, I don't mind the symmetry of it. I think it looks really nice. And, and I think there is still, there is still some differentiation. I worry that that middle unit. And just won't be nearly as popular, particularly given the way the door is kind of recessed between those posts. And but that said, I am, I am not a realtor, so I would expect realtors and developers to know better what will sell.
And this is also conceptual. You know, there's some things, we've actually taken this concept a little bit further um in, in-house and here's your way from that. Go back to the, the sketch. You know, there's, there's some elements of sort of a, go back to the argument, just please. You know, so each one of these sort of feels like its own home. This may be boring, but these, these each ones sort of feels like their own home. I think we can do some things to make each one of these, you know, with sort of this overhang eyebrow sort of. Make them, make them accentuate the vertical a little bit more, make them feel like each one is their own home. Accentuate the, the front doors. I mean, we can, we can certainly, we get the point. I, I think you make a good point about the roof lines and. And the transition across the park. Um and again, these are concepts we can, we can abandon.
I do like in that bottom right, to me, what differentiates the three is just the different colors. So that's a possibility. I mean, I think.
Absolutely.
I'd, I'd almost rather see differentiation of color than differentiation of architecture.
And we've done that really successfully on some of our product as well and you'll see that on. We see that on block twenty-six, we've done differentiation of color. A little bit, so it's. Kind of have it as these massings here and then looking down the block. And there's some reference images of how we differentiate with color past and you can imagine with a different coat of cloth. Like along here.
So I actually don't prefer that differentiation of color, but more where it's. Unit one is blue, unit two is white, et cetera, whereas that one, you know, you're using, everybody has a blue front door, whatever the case may be. Where this example, I really like that it's, all right, I live in the green house, you live in the white house, you live in the gray house. To me, that differentiates.
Got it.
Going over preferences, going back up to fourteen, just for color schemes, I think you asked for which of the uh.
Yes.
Preferred, like there, my preference is the one with the blue door. My concern with the lower color scheme is just my experience looking at the uh, the paint jobs in Colorado, the, the beige that's included in the bottom one. Tends to not weather very well and it becomes more distressed quicker. My, my own personal preference. And then on a lot fifteen, I think I agree with basically everything Mark said. I, I prefer the transitional uh over any of the others. Uh I think the closer we can blend the uh transitional to the contemporary, that way we just continue to blend from outside. Uh where a single family inward, where it's more contemporary, closer to downtown, I think that's good. I like the uh upper right picture where we've got the wood facade, but that's uh one, the picture to the left where we have the distressed wood look as well. Uh I, I think that looks great.
One of the things that I, I like about that picture, just going back to it again, is you know, you've got some differences in the, in the height elevations there with the, with each of the, the pitches of the roof. And I know you, you guys are trying to go for a certain height and that, that looks like it's a two-story unit instead of a three. But just, it's architecturally interesting because it's not everything uniform.
I, I think the big thing I was looking for is more contrast. I mean, the, the, the third option didn't have enough contrast, in my opinion. And the first option, uh the contemporary style just seems to be everything else that's going up in the general metro area. I think we want something that's more unique and incorporates directly the superior feel of what we already have, what's existing. And then blends into what's being built in downtown.
I, I agree with trustee, let's just comment, as, as a realtor, I think customers are more looking for an architectural striking building. You're going to have two, three or four units put together, but with articulated roof lines and an interesting facade, that's what's going to draw the people to the house. If they're all like the one on the bottom right here, you know, just different colors, sorry to disagree with you.
Yeah, that's fine. You, you know much better about this.
I think the architectural aspect is more, would be more attractive to the consumer than. Repetitive architecture. Like you said, there's a lot of that all over the metro area. And it, if builders know, you guys have done the research, but I think for superiors, such a small town and, and unique, I think we need, I think we need unique.
Good, thank you. Other comments?
I, I just have a question and this is for Matt and Brian and Steven.
Yes.
We received an email from a resident just uh asking about the existing twenty-five foot setback in the buffer, the two hundred and twenty-five. Is anything in this project contemplate changing any of that since whenever the last approval was approved?
No, um all of these blocks are away from the buffer area. There's blocks between the buffer area and these blocks, so. There's no requirement for single family on these blocks.
Right, right. I, I didn't think it would, but it just was raised by a resident, so I wanted to just make sure.
Yeah, so you, you'll have applications come forward for the blocks that Bill just pointed out. And then Toll Brothers is working through their application for the blocks to the east there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments?
I think the only other comment I would have is uh you just, if you guys have the opportunity to stick around for a public comment tonight or watch the video later. I'm sure people will have comments from the audience and we're going to get those questions down the road, so if you hear them now and incorporate them going forward. Either just for an answer, redesign or whatever, it makes the job that much easier going forward.
Good point. To that end, we have, if no one else at the table has questions, we could offer an opportunity for public comment during the, well, during the work session movement. Of course, during the regular meeting if people did not come, so if anyone in the public would like to comment or ask questions?
Hi, I do. Um I was here for your first three presentations. This is number four. And I do want to echo what has been said. This is so much better. I mean, thank you for listening, honey. One question I have is on this one, one of the, one of the issues raised by trustee Sandy here. Was whether there was enough space for the cars to get into the garages. Has that been addressed? I can't tell from just looking at the drawing.
Right.
Because she, she raised the issue that um. There's a problem when those areas are so narrow that you can't get your car in and turn around and.
How wide is she?
Get them into the garage. And I'm wondering if that's been addressed and solved because I can't tell by the spaces from here outside.
So um really the, the area where we would have sort of a dual-load alley. And again, this is a conceptual drawing, but that would be the area that would be your part would be wider in nature, the wider alley for fire access. And so um I'm going to say that that would be a twenty-six foot wide pay section and then the actual building separation would be even further than that. So we, we, we do have not just, you know, experience from the built environment and product type like this where we've been able to, you know, test and try it in the environment. But we also have, excuse me, engineering software that actually shows the turning movements, not just the fire engines and, and garbage trucks, but also of actual vehicles. Both large and small. And so I, I can say with confidence that it will work.
We don't have the same garage door issue here, do we? That, that we went through like.
No, no.
Two, three years ago? No, no.
Taller and.
And you're not asking for any height waivers, is that correct?
That is not a lot.
You're going to be within the guidelines.
That's right, yeah. So below thirty-two feet on block fourteen and then on block fifteen is a fifty-five foot height, so we'll be well, well.
My property backs to uptown center, so you know, we are on behalf of the neighborhood, so we, we care.
Understood.
The other thing I wanted to say is, um one of the things that was raised in one of the hearings, and I'm trying to think, I think it was trustee Dozel raised. The issue of the colors and I want to encourage you again to use more color and I think that, that was used, that was also raised here. Because I, maybe it's the pictures, but I just don't see the colors. I see a lot of uniformity. Maybe some stones and bricks and just some variation. My father used, my father was an architect. He was now a deceased, so I, I saw what they designed. You can work with stone and brick and, you know, make a little more difference. So the houses aren't cookie cutter and as, as trustee Hemmerly said, you know, so. You know you're coming to your house.
Yep.
Late at night and maybe you had two drinks, you know the heck of a hunk. But, but those were just some of my comments. And I do love the park in the middle, rather than just sticking it in the, in the middle of the square. I think that's such a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? All right, anything?
I'll be back on December tenth with a, a broader update on the rest of the project and also looking forward at all the other applications. So we'll have a bigger discussion on, on the PD and, and kind of vision moving forward then. But unless you guys.
No, just thinking.
Have any more questions for this, we'll work on the FTP and we'll have this back in front of you and. No time at all.
One, one final question. Um and this is just in honor of outgoing mayor pro town Pennington. Baton board?
We're all suggestions.
Suggestions.
I think we are. It's, it's a very unpopular material for the contemporary farmhouse right now.
I, 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 I thought you were, but I just wanted to make sure that. She knows that we're not forgetting to ask.
You got some horizontal and vertical siding here, but that, that would be kind of material.
Okay.
Can I answer your question?
Yeah.
I'll clarify something. We always require the media to submit word. So I think part of uh just.
We always require that they do cement board, so I think part of trustee Pennington's concern is that when you do battening board on like a hybrid board, it wears a lot faster, and cement board is much more durable, so we are always looking for that backwood material and fastel picture off your application.
So we'll let Mayor Brotem pass you on. It'll be the highest batting board on the marker.
It's great.
Best batting board money can buy.
Okay, thank you again for coming back. We will turn the room and be back here at 7 o'clock.
Thanks so much.